All right, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the March 4th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. It is 6:02 and we are called to order. I'm going to note, we don't need to, we need, don't, don't need to take a, take a roll call. It appears all commissioners are present. And I'm going to ask Vice Chair Harrison, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, thank you. So are we, oh, there we go. All right, hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I move the agenda.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. I noticed that there are no minutes to approve. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our wonderful admin assistant Liz was out ill for the week. And so we were unable to complete the minutes, our apologies. You'll have an extra large stash next time.
All right. Great. Okay. Announcements and introductions. Do any of the commissioners have any announcements to make?
I'm here.
Dennis?
I attended a webinar today that I wanted to make everybody. And I'll send the link to it. But there's a, I'd say, an earth scientist named Jim Lurie, L-A-U-R-I-E, who scared the pants off me and then gave me a way to look forward to taking action as we are a planning commission and as a community that cares about our planet and our environment. He, he pointed out that by 2061, if we continue on the path we are now, we'll be at 557 parts per million of carbon in our atmosphere. We're at 417 now. And the scientists on the planet have said that anything over 350 is really problematic, as we all are calling it climate change, so forth. But he actually outlines a plan to deal with somewhere between 5 billion and 12 billion acres on the planet in order to by 2051, reduce the carbon load to 300 parts per million. And it was very encouraging. And I'm thinking about that as a planning horizon for us. We're in our 30th year. And, you know, we have 30 years to get to 300 parts per million. Be kind of cool to actually have a Calabasas movement that says, you know, on our 30th anniversary, we commit to 30 years' worth of reduction to 300 parts per million of carbon and lead the way. We've done things like that that are as big when our, we talked about doing our secondhand smoke ordinance as an example and other things that we do. And they have planetary effect. So I will send that to each of you and also ask that we do some research on what he's proposed and see if there is something in it that would be helpful to us as we're planning, not just our housing element, but our general plan and our long-range plan for the health and safety of our community.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to oral communications, public comment. This is the part of the meeting where members of the community who wish to address the Commission on Matters not on the agenda, this is the time. I, do we have, who's, who's, who's monitoring who we have present?
I will be monitoring the audience tonight.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Do we have anyone present wishing to speak at this point? If you, if you wish to speak on a matter not on the agenda, please raise your hand.
Judy, you're muted.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm muted. I'm looking at the attendees and I see no hands raised at the time, at this moment.
Okay. Then let us move on to new business. Item number one is-
I take that back, I just had a hand.
Okay.
Sorry, I have Joe Choco raising his hand.
Okay. You want to go ahead and admit him, please?
Sure. Joe Choco, if you would like to admit yourself?
I have, Joe Choco, Calabasas resident. I just wanted to point out to you that when I look at the agenda, I see public correspondence received under oral comments. There are John Sawares, it's a follow-up to what he had to say last week. And it includes a picture of a banner that he hopes will be adopted in order to promote knowledge of the public hearing that's coming up on West Village, Calabasas. So I just wanted you to make sure that you saw that and that you acted accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. We did receive that, thank you. All right. Judy, do you have anyone else?
No, I have nobody else.
Okay. Now we'll move on to item number one. And that is selection of arts in public places representative from the Planning Commission. Do we have any volunteers? Dennis?
I would very much like to be the Commission representative on the art in public places. I was actually very early on responsible for appointing one of the best people we ever had serving in that capacity, Laureen Mark. And I would like to, you know, build upon the reputation of her and her colleagues over the years in dealing with art in public places, our Arts Fair, and so many other things that have grown out of that effort. And I think renewed vigor in that arena would be a really good thing. I'd appreciate your support for that.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other volunteers? All right. Dennis? I think that you would be an excellent representative. So let's, let's take a vote.
I think the chair of points.
Yeah, the chair of points. So we're fortunate.
So we don't have to take a vote. Dennis? You are hereby appointed. Congratulations. I think that you'll, I think that you will make an excellent member of that, of that organization.
Thank you very much, and I'll keep you informed.
Terrific, thank you. And all right. Yes, Laureen?
May I just make a comment? I want to congratulate Dennis Watchburn on his appointment to art in public places. There are three positions on art in public places. One is through the Planning Commission as we have this evening. The second is through the Recreation and Parks Commission. And the third is through the council. The primary responsibility of this group is in selecting art that is collected for projects in the city, commercial projects in the city, and working with the applicant to develop significant art contributions. It is distinguished from the Arts Council, which is a different group that has a foresight to broader arts, arts components within the city of Calabasas. I just want to make that distinction for the commission. But this particular group has been used by the council and by the city manager to assist when art selections are sought in various other capacities for the city. They played a significant role in offering design contributions for our newly completed Lost Hills Road Bridge. So there are interesting opportunities in the way of project contributions that Dennis will be part of. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let us move on to item number two, which is a review of recommended Planning Commission amendments to the city's story poll procedures. And as I understand it, we are going to be reviewing and discussing the proposed amendments. And we can choose to further, further amend. And we can, we can end up with a vote to send this on to the city council. Or, as I said, we can, we can recommend further amendment. That we'll see how this goes. Okay? I, is there a presentation on this?
Good evening. I have a verbal presentation, no PowerPoint presentation. But welcome, everybody, and especially happy to see a couple of new faces on here. And welcome. I know Bob from a long time ago, and Daniel, I had a chance to meet you recently. And, and welcome to the group. This item has been here twice now, and this is time number three. So I think we've already had a certain amount of productive discussion with the old group. Now there's some new faces, perhaps there's even some more. But you probably have noticed in my staff report, I kind of boiled down to where we ended up into three kind of categories. You know, one had to do with the materials. There's a lot of discussion about what material to use to depict the roof lines for the story polls. And the group came to, I think, a pretty solid decision that no one had a problem with orange mesh netting. So I did make that change in the draft that went out to you. But that, that also came with a, a little bit of further direction to reach out and talk to some of our neighboring cities and the story poll contractors to see what other kind of information we can gather from them about what they do and, and what's been working for them. I've included that all in the report. And I'll note that Agora Hills does use both mesh netting and colored ribbons. So they have an option of two different kinds of materials. And Malibu, in their story poll policy, just lists the mesh netting. Although, as an aside, I was just down in Malibu last weekend. I think the, maybe the weekend before, driving down Pacific Coast Highway, and I saw story polls on the beach side of the road in the east end of town that did not have the mesh netting. So they do from time to time, change that. I did have a discussion with one of the planners down there. And they said the director does loosely allow them to change from a mesh netting to some other material, but for the most part, they use orange mesh netting. So I haven't seen any in Agora Hills, but my conversations with them said they, they, they can use either, and they're fine with those. I did also get a chance to talk to a contractor, and I had a very good discussion with them. They have kind of a contrary opinion to the use of the orange mesh. They said the, the material is very, it's not that elastic, so it stretches real easily in weather and wind conditions. It tends to sag over time. It picks the wind up a lot easier and often blows the poles down. And that relates to, you know, some safety and probably a little bit more of maintenance concerns over time. But there's a caveat on that, and I asked him the question of if, based on a four-week timeframe that our, our story poll policies require prior to a hearing, are they generally good within that four-week period? He said, yes, generally, the mesh will be fine for four weeks. Anytime that timeframe gets extended out, you run the risk of, and this is all dependent on, on conditions, right? So it's, it's, if there's a wind event that comes through, you could be in trouble with that, and they might have to go back up, put it back up. It could pull, pull poles down. He also said, the higher up you go, again, you get more of that problem. So I threw that in there just for one, one expert's experience with that material. We didn't recommend that change per se. But you probably notice in the, the recommended language, a caveat, a little, a little what-if, right? Based on the opinion of a, of a professional licensed professional, that the mesh isn't considered safe. Or if it's going to be put up in a, in a, a period of time or a, you know, where there's expected weather patterns that could be adverse, then maybe as a possibility, the director can, can change the material based on that. The material that was used for the, and I'm going to use the West Village as an example. Obviously, we're not supposed to talk about that project and anything related to that. But I will point to the story polls as an example, because it's probably the most extreme example we've had to date. We have 60-foot-high poles on that project. So I think it's a really good example of a challenging site to do this on. So and you'll notice on that one, there was the flags. And Mr. Hunter, I think that's how you pronounce it, had let me know that, that this synthetic material is very strong. It doesn't stretch out of, out of place. And in applications where they're going to either be higher or need to stay up for a longer period of time, he's had more success with that. So I did want to include that in the discussion just as a frame of reference. But at least at this point, we're not recommending that, that we only use that material instead of the mesh netting. We have right now the recommended language to use the mesh netting. The next issue that we kind of boiled this down to is really implement our signage. So we talked a lot about when should we put a sign on the property with the use of the story pole? Currently, our story pole policy only requires them for commercial applications. So I again looked at Malibu and Agora Hills. Malibu does not require signs at all in any, in any situation. The city of Agora Hills requires them in every situation. So we considered that and came back with our recommendation that we just expand to every project that requires story polls, let's have them put up a sign. That would augment this policy to be more of a across-the-board application. So everyone, everyone, it applies to everyone the same way. We thought that was a good idea. We talked within that concept of having situations when you don't put up 100% of the poles, whether or not to include the poles on the rendering that goes on the sign. So a public, a member of the public can see the image and see where the poles are and equate that to where the poles are on the lot. Again, we thought that's a good idea to have for every project if you're not putting up 100% of the poles. So you'll get a better representation, a better chance to see where all the poles are in relation to the proposed project. And a chance to see maybe that the poles don't depict 100% of the project. And you can now visualize where the rest of that project is and what it's going to be. So we thought that was a good idea. The last, the last question that we got was a lot of commentary that came as to authority. So who has authority to do what? What if someone, if there's a change that's made? If there's less poles that, that, that need to go up? Who makes that decision? Is there appeal authority? So again, I reached out to the cities of Agora and Malibu, both of which only have their planning directors as a sole person that makes all these decisions. So, and in fact, in both cases, talking to their planners, they do what we've been doing here in Calabasas, which are the planners work directly with the applicants. We'll take in a plan. It's called a story poll plan. They'll show us the locations of the poles and to how high they are. We'll look that over and approve them. If there's some, some modifications that need to be made, we will look over that and make those decisions and then, and then move on. So Agora and Malibu don't have any kind of appeal process, and their planning commissions or councils aren't involved at all. Our policies, you know, the director makes the majority of the decisions. However, if there's less than 50% of the poles that need to get put up, then that decision now becomes the Planning Commission's decision. We'll bring a report to you outlining why that's not, that decision was made. And then you guys will become the final decision maker. So ultimately, we're not asking for a change. We're not recommending any kind of a change to that. That's how we do it now. It seems like there is some oversight authority from, from you guys in instances where there's a, there's a difference. And if they can put up all the poles or most of the poles, then it's a director's decision. So again, at this point, we don't recommend a change to that. And I've outlined some various reasons in the staff report for that. I think, I think the, the lion's share, which is, you know, with, with the larger, more issue projects aside, the projects like our Razznick and new commercial multifamily, larger projects, these projects have a, have a, a long timeline. There's usually an environmental document and longer permit streamlining timeframes where we feel we could run into an issue if there's, if the commission becomes a decision maker for every decision. Because we could run into issues with exempt projects where we only get 60 days to approve the project after a sequoia determination. So this process to put up story polls is four weeks prior to the hearing and then lead time to work with an applicant to get a story poll plan approved and for a contractor to put them up. So we're already pushing the month and a half to two-month timeframe to do that for a project. We need to make a decision in 60 days. So just would caution you about that for your discussion. So those were the, the key kind of areas that we discussed. I, I recognize there's a lot of letters that came in from the public. I've had a chance to read through them, and I think that they've all been forwarded to you guys. The issues that stuck out, stuck out to me was they all liked the use of the orange mesh. So it appears that we're mostly in line or all in line with them on, on that issue. Several seem to want to expand the Planning Commission's role in decision-making. And we just discussed that. And also, it issues seem to be a waiver for that the, currently that the director can make for excessive cost. And I sense that, that folks aren't happy that that's an issue area that they want to, the director to be able to waive a project, to have to waive a project. So that was something that was put in by the city council. We're not, at this stage, proposing a change that. We're open to suggestions on it. And with that, I will end my presentation. And I do want to note, just real quick, if we get to the point where we're working on some wordsmithing, I've had a chance to talk to Commissioner Mueller just before the meeting. And he had some additional great suggestions just to wordsmith. They're not substantive changes. They were, again, just rewriting certain, certain areas of it to make it more easily understood. So, and if we get to that, let me know. I can read those changes to you. If not, if this were to have to come back to another meeting, I could incorporate those into another working draft of the story poll policy for your review. So I'll end it there. Obviously, I'm available for questions. And we have some members of the public that were letter writers that are in our attendee. So they may wish to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Before I open the, the public here, Matt, yes?
Thank you, Chair Vosberg. Wanted to jump in there with one or two legal points before the public hearing and before Commissioner questions with thanks to staff. Point number one, as alluded to earlier, while the West Village example is currently the largest, if not the only, story polls that are up in the city and are therefore a really obvious visual example of what story polls are and what they look like. It is not a project that is on your agenda this evening. Thus, I would caution the commissioners, do not discuss West Village in particular. There is no debate. The decision has been made previously by this commission about what story polls are being installed for that project. That decision cannot be reopened at this point. So the, I know some members of the public had raised the idea of adding more story polls or adding additional signage, et cetera. West Village is noticing is going to be completed as required by law. West Village story polls have been completed as required by law, and those two decisions are not open for re, for reevaluation. Instead, the West Village project will be returning to this commission for a full public hearing on April 15th and April 22nd. And I'll ask staff to make sure I cited those two dates correctly. April 15th and, yeah, 22nd.
21st.
21st, off by one. April 15th, Tuesday, Thursday, April 15th, and Wednesday, April 21st. This commission, same time, same place. And second is to consider that, as noted, the story poll procedures are a policy decision fully within the discretion of the commission to recommend to the city council for approval. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Do any commissioners have any questions? Either of Glenn or of Matt before we open the public hearing or any comments? John?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify on the orange mesh proposal in this current draft. Glenn, that's what we would call in the law, a rebuttable presumption. In other words, orange mesh is the preferred material, but it's not the exclusive material. If, if the director decides for whatever concrete and specific reason orange mesh isn't going to work, the flags are an alternative. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. It is fully our intent to make sure orange mesh is used in the lion's share of projects. You know, only if necessary would we consider going to a different material.
And even more narrowly than if necessary, under the current proposed language, using a material different than the orange mesh netting would only be available if the director determined that that material would pose a safety risk or would lack this sufficient durability for the, for the factors as defined.
Well, just to follow up, there's also, there is also the possibility that the director could say that in a specific project, no story poll is an alternative.
Oh, yes, of course. I didn't mean to define the narrow, so, the world so narrowly. On the question of material change, it would be safety risk or durability. As to the amount of poles, it drops back, the proposal is to drop back to the current system where if the project is to be, for lack of a better word, polled between 0 and 50% of the mass, then that decision would be director recommendation, commission approval. If it's to be polled between 51% and 100%, that would be director decision and then built as, built accordingly for the factors that are listed.
If I may, Madam Chair, just follow up on that. So, so if the director and the applicant come up with a plan that polls or has, has a story poll plan for 50% or more, that could be, based on the circumstances, orange mesh- uh, orange mesh and other material and no story poll in portions of the project.
Yes, the right, the, a, a project could have that variety, um, depending on the
And, and yet the, the, again, the preference, the strong preference is, or is maximum story pollage with orange mesh.
Yes, that is staff's understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just note, um, also for the record and for the members of the public who may be uh, noting, the public comment period uh, is distinct from public hearing. We'll be taking public comments, but as this is a uh, legislative matter structured through a policy and procedure, it's not a formal public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Um, I actually, I was kinda reviewing this topic and I'd like to have it that in every story pool situation um, that a photo simulation rendering is also uh, posted on the site. It really helps the public understand what the project's gonna look like and the scale of it. Um, gives them really good idea versus just saying commercial property, this much square foot.
Okay, I, and do you, do you contemplate by that, that I residential projects uh, that require story polls would also require a uh, a rendering?
Maybe single family residents, not as much, but if it's multifamily or any commercial, then um, I would think so. Unless the single family residence was gonna obstruct some scenic view or something like that, uh, then maybe, then it would be necessary.
Okay, well, I, something certainly to discuss, uh, but uh, if any type of, if any type of, of exception is contemplated, it would have to be wordsmithed very carefully to make sure that there is a full understanding of where that rendering is required and where it is not.
Hmm.
Okay. I, anything else?
No.
All right. Now Matt, you said it's not a formal public hearing, but I still need to open the public hearing since there's public comment, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's um, open the public comment period would be the uh, the, the phrase that I'd recommend using. I know it's semantic, but if we're ever litigated, it's nice to have our ducks in a row.
Fully understand. Okay, uh, and before I do open the public comment uh, period, um, I do want to note that there were a few uh, a few letters, emails. We had a number of emails and letters submitted from the public. Um, and a few of them expressed concern uh, that their submittals from the September meeting uh, have not been included in the materials tonight. So they resubmitted or they summarized um, what had been submitted uh, at the September meeting. I, I do want to note that I those submittals form part of uh, the record of that September meeting and what you have submitted in conjunction with the meeting tonight forms a part of the record for tonight. Your emails, your letters, uh, do form part of the record. Uh, so please be assured of that. I, Commissioner Leah, uh, you, you need to unmute.
I just wanna uh, state the obvious. There are two new commissioners who had not necessarily seen that prior documentation. It should have been made available, not only to us, but to the public as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, I let us open the public comment period. I, again, who is going to be, who's going to be monitoring this for us?
I'm here still, uh, Judy, Gillie. Yes, since. Go ahead.
I, I just wanna indicate again to the public, if you wish to speak, uh, please raise your hand, uh, and you will be, uh, you will be admitted, uh, asked to unmute at the appropriate time. Uh, how many people do, do we have?
I hear two hands up at the moment.
Okay, then uh, we're gonna, we'll stick to the, the usual three minute, uh, three minutes uh, per speaker at the moment. Uh, and Judy, ju- please identify one at a time who, who, who we're admitting.
The first speaker is from Norman and Mark C. Tron. If you would just unmute yourself, you'll be able to speak.
I believe I'm unmuted now.
Yeah.
Um, I'm a longtime Calabasas resident. And I'm just gonna comment very briefly on what I heard tonight. I really do believe that transparency is the key. Decisions that are made at the, at the director's desk never makes a public hearing. We, we never know why were story polls denied or uh, why were certain things uh, suggested? Because that's done in a ministerial fashion. And I think when it comes to commercial, uh, any size commercial, I think that it's very important that we have story polls. Um, and this isn't, I'm not requesting an, an expansion of any decision making. It really again, I'm, I'm sorry, so sorry to repeat myself, but it is a transparency issue. There have been many times when decisions have been made and we're kind of, what happened? When? And the other thing is I do appreciate uh, Mr. Milstein's suggestion of the signs. Uh, but I would suggest that they at least be large enough to be readable. The signs that I've found, especially in some areas where we can't park the car, we have to park some distance away and then walk down to see this eight and a half by 11 sign. So I would suggest that the signs be made larger and I think I had one more point. Um, whoa, the other one was if, if the director decides that no story polls are necessary, uh, and that should be reviewed by the planning commission, which I think I heard uh, Mr. Mueller say, concrete and specific reason. So I would hope that that would be uh, a, a upheld, that if they were denied, there would be a concrete and specific reason for the denial of story polls. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Judy? Do we have someone else?
Yes, next I have Joe Choco. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Joe Choco, longtime resident. Um, we're not talking about changing um, responsibilities, but there's a particular uh, issue related to feasibility and that of course Glenn mentioned, the waiver of potential uh, polls because of excessive costs, which we all find to be a very subjective thing. Uh, there's no language in there about exactly what the baseline is or what they should expect or, or how it's determined that those things are excessive. So leaving it only with the director is a big problem for me and I know a lot of other people as well. So um, on that particular issue, I think you gotta, you know, let the planning commissioners be the ones that uh, weigh in on that particular one. And, and particularly anytime that a- as it already stands, 50% or lesser proposed. A- and as someone has already pointed out, and I'm not mentioning it at, at, at Matt's request, um, the developer proposed way less than 50% and it was only because of public input and, and being aware of the fact uh, that it got changed at all to something that's much closer. And as some people have already pointed out, jeez, those things have been up for a long time. And uh, and yeah, a few of them came down in the wind, but I see that they've been put back up. What also came down in the wind were the banners. And when I saw that and I saw them blowing down the road, I actually went to the trouble of going and getting them, folding them up, sticking a rock on top of them at the site, and I let Maureen know about it so that they can be retrieved. Unfortunately, they look like they're ruined at this point. The eyelets have been ripped off, so they're probably gonna have to be replaced, but um, when I saw the woman putting them up, I had suggested to her, she should have used the kind that have slits in them already that allow for wind passage. Um, she said that she was gonna cut them herself. I, I've suggested she not in case she destroyed the integrity. Um, but that's a suggestion for next time around. Um, when Glenn brought up the issue of uh, projects where you only got 60 days, it's gotta come, then those applicants should really come prepared with their story poll uh, suggestions immediately and them get dealt with immediately so that that isn't as big a problem a- as far as that goes. The last point I wanna make is the i- issue of redevelopment is most likely. And because all of those sites being redeveloped have uh, existing buildings on them, um, story polls won't necessarily be possible. So you need to put in specifics about additional signage and notifications that are gonna be necessary in that case, and that's within five seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy, do we have anyone else?
I don't have anyone else.
All right, then I am going to close the public comment section of the meeting.
Uh, let me take that back. So sorry, one hand just popped up, Joanne Swara.
Okay, and
So sorry.
I'm going to reopen the public comment portion. Go ahead and admit her, please.
Okay, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Hello, my name's John Swar and a longtime resident of Calabasas. And uh, I'd like to also support the fact that if the story polls are less than 50%, that it should go back to the planning commission uh, because it's important that there be some oversight and the planning commission does represent the citizens of the uh, directly in terms of being residents. So we, we appreciate that. And you know, the one instance where we had the, a situation where planning uh, the number of story polls came back less than 50%, the planning commission went in there uh, rolled up their sleeves and figured out where story polls could go. And, and now we have a, a, a very good representation of what's going on. Now, I also would like agree in terms of the signage that's put up. Uh, the signage should not only include information about the, where the story polls are and, and what they are, but it would be nice to have information as to when the meetings are. You know, we know now uh, six weeks ahead that we're gonna have a planning commission meeting regarding the story polls. And to me, I think it's important that if people are gonna go look at those things, that they also see what the dates at the uh, signs that are put up, that they also see what dates the uh, the meetings are on. And it all goes back to what was mentioned earlier about transparency. And I think that that was the, the big thing that came up years ago when we first did this, is that somebody from the somebody from the planning commission, when it was first presented, said, oh, it's a matter of transparency. The public wants to see what's going on and that's what story polls are. So thank you very much for all that you've done and what you're gonna be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy?
No one else. Nobody else.
We're gonna take a beat. Make very sure that no hands go up.
Take a moment, yeah. I don't see anyone else.
Going twice. All right, I, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting. I, do we have any discussion by commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Washburn? Uh, you need to unmute there.
I understand, and lower the hand. Um, I would actually appreciate it if staff or our attorney would comment on the um, online capacities that we have to be able to represent projects that are before us, you know, whether they're commercial or industrial or residential. It's my experience that in every case in the last number of years, there's a pretty robust offering of information online at either the city website or available through contact directly with the staff to be able to deal with some of the interesting and um, worthy questions that were just uh, I guess described by some of the comments. But um, if you can tell us what our current offerings are online, let's just say, um, if we, if we look at the Razznick property as an advantage or as an example. I remember personally seeing that we did a pretty elaborate signage as well as a, a lot of discussion and ultimate decisions on the story polls, but I'm sure that online, you know, anybody who wanted to get into real detail about what the renderings were, what the measurements were of any of the projects and everything else, it's all there. All you have to do is go to citycalabasas.com, planning commission segment of the website, ask for the project. If you don't get your answers there visually, you should be able to um, ask staff to make that available to you. And it is a matter of public record if it's been at a hearing or whatever. So it seems to me that uh, we actually have a pretty deep bench when it comes to h- helping people understand what the projects are. But if you would comment on that for me, I'd appreciate that.
All right, sure, I can do that. Um, we have for more of our, what we call our larger projects. Um, these would deal with uh, mixed use projects, commercial projects. Um, we have uh, our project page that on our webpage. And that has everything from the project description, um, meeting information. Um, I know for some of the projects, we've had the story poll information posted, um, including the banners that were used and pictures of the story polls. Um, that's all available. Um, we can't post project plans for copyright laws on our websites. Um, in better times, staff's always available for um, a visit and sit down with, and I used to always discuss project plans with anybody who would wanna see them. It's a little bit tougher now with COVID. Um, I don't think we have uh, uh, we haven't really had the request since COVID started uh, that I'm aware of, but uh, if someone does request, we'd certainly uh, can figure out a way to show them a set of plans. Um, and uh, I wanted to add to that and because it was brought a public notification, um, Mr. Swara had mentioned that it'd be nice to have the public notification on the sign. There's some logistical challenges with that. Um, the polls typically, typically go up four weeks before a public hearing. Sometimes that four weeks doesn't culminate in a hearing at the four week mark. So we may not know four weeks out the exact date of a public hearing. We may have a general sense, but things can always come up. If we're working with an applicant to provide us some, some last minute details, we may have to move that date. So it's hard, it's gonna be hard to put the meeting date on a sign for story polls. There are instances and the director has the authority. It's not a requirement, but they can choose and we typically do in uh, for larger projects and for projects in um, let's say the Highlands and Old Topanga have a public notice sign put up in addition to a sign for the story polls that has all the legal information on it. So, so signs will go up for that. Um, they can't always be up at the same time as the story polls initially go up. So I wanted to comment to that as well.
Just if I could add two further points. One is the signs on site are indeed required for more or less any commercial project and any significant, significant residential project that is multifamily. Uh, not single family residential, but any single family residential project, as might hit the commission, were it to be a new, larger single family house, that would require story polls and would require a mail notice to the neighbors within 500 feet. Um, so folks would be aware of that one as well. And just to reemphasize one point as to the plans, plans are available for review by any member of the public at even now. Contact us, the community development department or the city clerk's office. And safe arrangements will be made mindful of COVID protocols to allow plans to be reviewed by any member of the public. The renderings that are received are posted online if received. Again, there we would typically receive renderings for larger commercial projects and multifamily projects, not so much even a larger single family house. And plans are not posted online under certain provisions of state law that protect architects copyrights. But again, they're available for public review.
Right, Commissioner Washburn, you had
Just a quick follow up because Matt raised a couple of issues there from a legal standpoint. If we were to, you know, put dates of meetings on signage and schedules change, is there a liability to the city, the developer, or the applicant, or to anyone in the community, frankly, having to rely on the dates that are on a sign that's posted on a property that could be rained out or damaged or any number of things. But it seems to me that the fallback would always be, if you have, if you're in doubt, check with City Hall because it's all there if necessary, but tell me if I'm wrong.
The city would not be liable from a legal perspective. We are not liable for note errors and noticing there's a fair amount of case law that supports that. However, the community's expectations might be mislabeled misplaced or harmed. Hence, staff generally waits until a date is certain before requiring the date to be noticed on site. The same situation is when a project is coming forward, story polls for again, the larger more substantial projects may well be installed before the hearing date is certain, ensuring additional public notice by getting the story polls up earlier than once the date of the hearing at the planning commissioner or the council is confirmed, then the formal notices go out for that date.
All right, Commissioner Mueller.
Yes, I'm a little confused, and I guess this goes to Matt. I thought you just said that there would be circumstances under which, under the current policy, a single family project would would have to have story polls. Is that what you said?
Yes, and the situation would be a new single family residence, not additions, but a entirely ground up new house. That was within, for example, the Old Topanga or Calabasas Highlands overlay zones.
Yeah, all right. Putting those putting those specific geographic areas aside, there is no requirement in the current policy to require story polls for single family dwellings, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The generic outside of those areas.
Right, okay.
That's a good clarification.
I wanted to make sure that, yeah, although, so it's kind of narrow right now. And then and then just to follow up, Madam Chair, if I may, Glenn, I thought you said during your presentation that if the the commission was interested in increasing signage, and by signage, I think you mean signage slash rendering. Let's just make sure that's
Yes.
Okay, so I I thought you said that if the commission was leaning that way, it would be staff's proposal that every site that has story polls would have a up a rendering. Is that, am I correct?
That that's our recommendation right now.
You're not, you're not saying we should do that. You're saying if we go toward rendering, it should go for all places that have story polls.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then the third thing, Madam Chair, is that I thought I heard a little confused, but I thought I heard a couple of the speakers say that they seem to say that they didn't have a problem with the planning commission not being involved if there was 50% or more polls for a particular project as approved by the director. They did want the planning commission involved in reviewing any decision by the director which would have polls for less than 50%. I admit I was kind of confused by by the the current policy, as I understand it says, if the if the director decides that a project can go forward with less than 50%, then that recommendation comes to the planning commission. Is that correct, Glenn?
That's correct.
If the if the director decides that 51% of the project can be polled, it does not come to the planning commission. Is that correct, Glenn?
Also correct.
Okay, and I thought I heard that I thought I heard that that at least certain members of the public didn't have a problem with the with the way in which, when the planning commission weighs in under the current policy, as opposed to our weighing in on every every story poll project. Maybe someone else heard more clearly than I did.
Well, certainly, Mr. Swara indicated that he was all for the planning commission being involved if if there were going, if there was going to be less than 50%.
That's what I heard, thank you.
But he did, he did indicate at the end, he did acknowledge, he, I believe he acknowledged that he realized after the presentation that that is how it, that is how it is now. And there is no proposed change to that particular policy.
Right, okay.
Okay, is that all Commissioner Mueller?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Harrison, I believe you had your hand up before.
Thank you. Just for Commissioner Millstein and Commissioner Leah, a little background, I went to the city council on September 25th, 2019, about a year and a half ago. I'm sorry, this is taking so long to get fixed, but anyway. And I I I brought to their attention that the city was putting up flags on story polls, which are not permitted under the current procedures. And so that they unanimously said that we should review it, and they, none of them opposed the the mesh or the orange mesh. And I believe we have a consensus for orange mesh, and that is the, that's proposal here. But I'm concerned about the alternative materials. And I can't cite a page number because our draft doesn't have page numbers. But if you go about six lines above poll locations and markings, which is, I don't know, several pages in, it says that if the director has the option of putting of providing, I mean, of permitting alternative materials such as brightly colored flags or ribbons. And I don't want that discretion. I want that, the director could have discretion to put in orange flags or orange ribbons. But remember how concerned I am, Matt probably remembers, about different colors. I don't want them to put in brightly colored blue or because we're going to get, you know, sued by somebody, the ACLU or somebody. I I think we have to stick with orange, just like in traffic situ, you know, in traffic when they're changing lanes or doing construction, everything's orange. So because it's the easiest to see. So I think I would prefer that the alternative materials just be flags or ribbons and just be orange. So that I would ask for that change in the wording, not alternative materials such as brightly colored flags and ribbons, but alternatively, orange flags or orange ribbons. That's that's my request there. And, you know, I also wouldn't mind giving the the director the some discretion to allow a large rendering instead of the story polls. Because when we had the HABAD, which put up all those blue flags around an existing building, I didn't think that was worthwhile. I thought that was burdensome to to them and not fruitful for the public. Because when you drove, if you drove down to Pan Canyon, you wouldn't see it. You had to know to park your car, get out, go behind the hedges and then look at it. But if there was a big billboard and the architect said he could do it, you know, with a rent, with a picture of it, I think that would be more informative than 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 the the flags or in our case, even the mesh sometimes. So I don't know how to do that, but I would give the director the option of doing that if the flags or the, I'm sorry, if the mesh is not really that useful. That's it.
All right, Commissioner Leah. Can you?
Thank you. I wanted to add some clarity to what Commissioner Mueller was discussing, particularly with respect to John Swara. He clearly stated in the email, he said, certainly does not need removal of planning commission oversight. And I read every email that came, and they all emphasized they did not want removal of planning commission oversight. And I did not see one email from anybody to the contrary. So I think that is something that must stay first and foremost in our minds as we review the proposed procedures.
Now, just to be clear, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn. The the proposed wording does not remove does not remove planning commission oversight. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. We want to leave exactly as it is, the authorities in place.
All right.
And explain that point a little bit more for the public's benefit. If I may, Chair and Commissioners, at present, a project that proposes less than 50% of story polls, of the mass of the project less than 50% to be story polled, requires planning commission approval of that story poll plan. And any project that proposes more than 50% or more, it's a director decision as to that story poll plan. The current proposal does not change those two authority divisions. I understood the comments from the members of the public who have been cited as asking for a change, asking to risk to create increase planning commission control and have the planning commission review and approve story polls at variously higher higher percentage threshold or even 100%. Anything less than 100% requires planning commission review and approval. That would be a policy change. It was, it is within the power of this commission to make a recommendation to that effect and within the power of the city council to approve it. But that that any change in the authority is not currently proposed by staff and the authors. Thank you.
Commissioner Mueller.
Yeah, just to, I mean, this is, this is why I said at the start of my speech, I was confused. Because I did read the emails pretty much like Bob did, that the public wanted more, wanted us to participate more vigorously in these story poll decisions. But then I heard the testimony, and it seemed like commentators were saying the discretion, we're not asking to change the discretion or the involvement of the planning commission as it's presently constituted. So I was confused, but now I I I understand that that at least some members of the public would like us involved in more. But the the proposal that we have in front of us doesn't change our involvement. We're involved when the when the director proposes something less than 50%. Then we get involved. If the director proposes more than 50%, we're not involved. So there is no oversight by the planning commission in that circumstance.
Okay.
Which, by the way, which is, which is, I guess we're in discussion. My my preference is not to change the current structure of the authority of the planning commission's oversight.
Thank you. Something that I think that that we should address because it was raised by Mr. Chelko when he spoke, and it was raised in virtually every written submission that we received. And that is an objection to item four, I think it would be page six, item number F. The recitation of factors to be considered in in determining whether it is feasible for the story polls to be installed. And one of those items is number F, is letter F, which is potentially excessive cost or unreasonable financial impact of designing, installing and maintaining story polls for this subject project. And I would like to hear from the commissioners, if you have any comments on that particular item, because it was something that seemed to be important to the public. So I think that we should at least discuss it. Does anyone want to weigh in? Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I think it should be removed. I don't think financial costs should be a concern in making a decision. They're building multimillion dollar projects. They should be able to include the cost that is required with story polls as part of doing business. I agree.
If I may, just so the commission members understand what developer means. When that word is used, remember that includes all property owners who are proposing a project for which this policy would then apply. And that would include single family homes in some places, and it did include, for example, the shul that or the HABAD that was mentioned by Commissioner Harrison when they had to do their project. And there are occasionally instances where the small scale developer is looking at having to meet these requirements, and that's a pretty hefty price tag for them.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
The planning commission could then make an exception for these small developers, because this is not aimed at small developers.
Well, I think the concern is that I, this is not, this is not reaching these, this type of thing. At least initially is not reaching the planning commission and I noted that in virtually every email or a letter that was submitted that objected to this item, it referenced multimillion dollar development. And as Tom just pointed out, not every project that is submitted that is required, at least as as a gateway consideration required to have story polls. Not everyone is a multimillion dollar project. And, you know, it seems to me that there has to be some leeway to adjust the requirements within the framework of the policy. There has to be some leeway to adjust based upon real life, actual considerations. And I think the the director, this doesn't say that that if an applicant, whether a developer or a home, someone building their own home within one of the overlay zones. It doesn't say if they come in and say that it's an excessive cost and it's too much for them, that the director is going to to waive the story poll requirements. It says this is one of the considerations. If there is an unreasonable financial burden, if it's an excessive cost. And I I think that that we have to place the confidence, you know, our confidence in the director to make that, to make that determination, to to include that as one of the considerations. The, you know, every project doesn't come in at the same size and the same the same configuration. And so it seems to me that there has to be some some leeway, as I said, to 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 consider. Yes, Commissioner Mueller.
Yes, and I I think I'm correct in saying that if, I guess, two, two points. One is, I'd like to ask Glenn if he knows if the director has I'd like to ask Glenn if he knows if the director has ever said no story polls because it's excessive, because of excessive cost, number one. Number two, if the director does decide to say no story polls in case X because of excessive cost, that that decision is going to come to us because that's a no story poll decision. And we then will review that. So we will, Bob, we will in fact have oversight over the decision by the director to get rid to to not require story polls due to cost. We're going to see that case.
Okay, well, you asked you asked Glenn to chime in, but I'm going to help Glenn on this one because I was one of the staff who worked with Habad, for example, and I know that quite a really what happens is we end up having to work with the applicant property owner on a poll by poll analysis, because they will typically come to us and say we can't erect this particular poll because of this. We'll look at the site and we'll say, let's be sure we, first of all, know that we're in agreement on the location. We come to an agreement. Okay, we're talking about the correct location and you're right, this is right in the middle of your driveway or whatever. And then we're going to negotiate. Perhaps we can put a pole that's over here off the driveway, for example, it will at least show most of the silhouette on that corner rather than none. And we'll work these sort of things out. Or we may say, can we do a cantilever or this sort of thing? And if they say that, you know, we talked to our story pool guy, that's a lot more expensive. Yada yada. Well, now you've brought the cost factor in together with other issues, safety, what have you. So cost isn't something we just apply to the whole enchilada. We might be looking at a cost factor just subject to one pole or some tweaking of how to do that for proximity to have a pole propped up on the side of a building because you're going to redevelop the building, right? We went through all that with with the Rasmick project. All kinds of back and forth, pull by pull, and we're trying to get as many out there as we can. Because that's the that's the goal.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I have a potential solution that might solve everybody's problems. Something comes to the planning commission for approval. The story, the proposed story poll policies are presented at that time. The commission can pass on it or not. Rather than after the fact. It seems so clear why that isn't being done now today.
If I could make sure I understand the proposal, Commissioner Leah, it would be that story polls, the proposed story poll plan, that is, for every project that would come to the planning commission, would first come to the planning commission. Is that your proposal?
It when the when it comes to the planning commission for approval, at that time it is presented. And it would only be those projects that we would have story polls, obviously, projects that are not going to have story polls would not have it. But any project that would require story polls, the story ball plan for the project is presented at the time they're seeking approval of the planning commission.
The story polls have to be installed a month ahead. I confess I'm missing something. So I understand your proposal to be that the planning commission would be the review authority for the story poll plan before they're installed. Or is it because the planning commission has always provided a copy of the story polls as they were installed when a project comes for to the planning commission for actual approval of the full project. But that would, of course, be well after the story polls were installed. So if there were concerns or weren't enough polls installed, then that ship would have sailed.
But it could then add more if there are not not enough for installed.
That would be legal, but would create challenges with the permit streamlining act in that story polls aren't installed until after the project is deemed complete, because we don't know what until the product is deemed complete, we don't know what the project is, so we can't develop a plan for story polls. So if we were to come to the commission, say it was polled at forty percent, it would come to the commission at forty percent or sixty percent. The commission might decide that wasn't enough and order more polls and then another month. Doing so would work if there was additional time, but if that time had not had did not exist under the stream, permit streamlining act, then it would there wouldn't be enough time to pull that off absent a waiver of the developer of the permit streamlining act deadline and a rational developer would be unlikely to agree to that waiver. So that would create some challenges. Rather than the alternative, if I could suggest one would be along those lines would be simply to require any project less than a hundred percent story polls comes to the commission for review and approval. Same as is true now at fifty percent or less. However, as noted, that would be policy choice subject to council approval.
And just to complete that point, if that's something the commission would be interested in considering. I do believe that so that we could try, of course, to continue to meet the permit streamlining act. I would hope the commissioners would be open to the idea they'd have a lot more special meetings that would have to occur rather quickly so that we could get this accomplished and continue to meet that requirement under state law.
Right.
And if I if I could add just one more piece, because there was a second question that Commissioner Mueller asked that wasn't answered, which is how frequently does this issue come up? And Tom kind of behind a little bit on it. But we have never had a project not put up less than fifty percent of the story polls for cost ever so far in our implementation of the story poll policy. So I'm not sure it's really a problem that needs to be solved in in our opinion. And as Commissioner Mueller also suggested, it's a self policing issue. Because if they don't put up at least fifty percent of the polls, they're coming to the planning commission and they're going to be explaining to all of you with hopefully evidence of why it was excessive cost to them. I'll also note that if you wanted to remove that provision and a project were to come to you and someone was concerned about cost, you've now removed a reason that you guys could not have them put up story polls if it's a legitimate issue.
Thank you. If there are no other comments. Commissioner Commissioner Washburn.
I'd like to ask Matt. Do we need to make the modifications that we've discussed in order to move forward with approval so we can send it on to the planning to the city council?
That would be staff's recommendation to provide direction and a recommendation, if not a consensus, then of course divided votes always always an option. Alternatively, of course, it could be continued for further discussion. I don't believe there's any current immediate time rush because the current important pending project already has its story polls up for eighteen months. If I could make one more comment to respond to Commissioner Milstein's point. I believe and I want Glenn to confirm is presently proposed. This new set would require all projects for which story polls are installed to have an onsite sign with a rendering or a photo simulation. The photo simulation only would need to also depict how the story polls fit into the rendering if it had less than a hundred percent story polls. So two states of the world, full story polls, rendering also on the sign, less than full story polls, rendering, and then the rendering highlighted to show what's missing from the story polls. So I think that piece on review has been covered.
That's correct. The the question that came up is whether or not to have that for all projects or have certain projects be exempt from that. We are proposing all projects. We didn't feel the cost for a sign was prohibitive enough to to even have a homeowner, really him and her over that, and it provides a great benefit to the public for every project that has story polls in our opinion.
Right. Commissioner Mueller.
I would like to suggest that I think we may have a consensus or at least a majority consensus on how to proceed, and I would be happy to set that forth.
But please do that. However, if I recall from earlier in the meeting, you had some additional wordsmithing. Is it is it is it concise enough that we can deal with it now?
It is, but it's also sort of words. It's it's non substantive grammatical corrections. Now, we could go through those. I've already given them to Glenn. Or we could say, we could say, do we have a consensus on A, B, C, D, and E? And let Glenn produce a a final document that has the consensus plus whatever grammatical changes any of us may want to make. Non substantive, you know, grammatical stuff. Now, if we go that way, then the question is, does this final document have to come back to us? Or do we want to finish the document tonight, wordsmithing and consensus and everything else? It could take some time.
I'm a fan of I'm a fan of of completing things. Matt, could we approve this and
Yes, you could.
On to council with the proviso that Commissioner Mueller's non substantive grammatical corrections be included without going through them at the meeting now, one by one.
Yes, that is correct. The commission, if of course you so chose as a body, could direct staff to forward it to the city council with the policy direction you provide tonight and non substantive grammatical and scrivener's errors fixes completed by staff, which both Glenn and I would have reviewed and approved, and we have a very good sense of what is is and is not substantive.
Okay, great. Commissioner Washburn?
I would like to make a motion with John's consensus and Michael's concurrence, Michael Harrison. I move that we change the colors of the flags or ribbons to orange. Make that change along with the wordsmithing changes of John Mueller or anything else that Glenn and his colleagues may have already caught. Approve it tonight and move it along with that expectation that we'll see a final copy that goes to the city council so that we know that the changes that we expected are going to be there. So the motion is very simply, let's make the changes to the flags and ribbons, orange color, fix the grammar and syntax, if that's what John's done, and we move it forward. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I would second it. And and I can actually give you the words that I'm talking about. It's on page four. It's about six lines above the section that says poll locations and markings. It says may approve alternative materials for the depiction of roof lines such as brightly colored flags or ribbons. I would just take out a lot of the words, so it just says may approve orange flags or ribbons. That that's that's simpler.
And that's what I said. I didn't want to go back to the text. So
Oh, no, no, that is what you said. I just wanted to let staff know where that was.
Understand, right.
I got it. Thank you.
And you seconded that motion, Michael?
Yes, yes.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I have some verbiage problems. Let's go through quickly as possible. On page three. The words reasonably and reasonable should be removed because they're argumentative.
Paragraph for you in.
The top of page three. Process, the words reasonably and reasonable are argumentative and they add nothing. It says.
Are you talking about the draft that is that has the pages numbered?
Yes, John.
I think he's referring to her. Yeah, where it says reasonably practical practicable in two of the brown colored places.
And and that's an example of 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 what I tried, and maybe this Bob works for you, where I put in, for example, instead of reasonably practicable, I put in possible or as soon as possible.
Okay, soon as possible would work for me.
Yeah, so yeah, I that's I think that's grammatical or syntactical versus substantive, but I did try to fix that kind of stuff.
Okay, that's that's good. I I go with that.
I I'll give you another quick example, Bob, if it if it helps. If you look at plan components on the same page. That page three.
Yes.
Heading is plan components. And it said the the project applicant shall confer with city staff for precise poll locations. I put in, I think it's more appropriate to say to determine the most appropriate location.
That works. That works for me too.
That is better.
Yep.
So that's what I tried to do.
Okay. My next.
All sounds good.
Story poll feasibility. That's got to go.
Can you be sure, Leah? Where are we?
The bottom of page five. Again, it leaves it open to the cloud.
You you mean the heading strike the word feasibility?
Well, and the concept. The feasibility, we either have it or we don't. Whether the feasibility of it, you could argue it day and night. You could put story polls on almost any project. Yes, they may be very costly, but they're not impossible. All the project couldn't be built.
Well, but but doesn't feasible feasibility needs to be determined. Sometimes and and I'm not even talking a hundred percent here, but there are certain story polls. It's just not feasible to place them in certain locations on a given project. And again, Rasmick was a good example, and we spent a lot of time going through and trying to to place and replace story polls because it just because of the the site and several factors impacting the site. It just wasn't feasible to put story polls in in multiple locations. And I with all due respect, the ability is is essential.
Look at phrase A, the first one they they talk about, how could you build a project? Let alone story polls.
Well, but there was already a building there. I that's where I think an image or a rendering is almost better than the polls in in a situation like that.
And that's what we decided, and that's what we did, you know, with huge sign in front of the place. And it was, I think it was replaced once or twice for that matter.
Yep.
Right. So if you but if you don't do the feasibility determination, what do you do, Bob? You just have you just put it up? What if it's not feasible, though, if you don't have a determination?
Then I hard to see how the project is feasible if they couldn't put up a story poll.
But I think they're saying that that was just one example where I think a rendering would be better anyway. The building itself would block this, you know, the the this the visibility of the polls.
If I have a good Commissioner Leah. This sort of thing is there because you do have redevelopment projects quite often, and you have even with new projects. Situations where the site's going to be reconfigured in a way that, for example, a debris basin will be relocated. Well, an existing debris basin cannot have story polls sitting in the middle of it because it has to be able to be cleaned out. Or an access drive may be relocated. And the access drive as exists today may be necessary for fire access. So that is why this thing is in there. It's not because the story polls would represent a building on the site as the site is presently configured. Quite often, the site is going to be reconfigured in some way as part of the project. And you don't want to block entrances to buildings. You don't want to put a story bowl in front of a fire hydrant, those sorts of things.
Then I think we need an if then paragraph to clarify what would be done if it's not feasible instead of it seems like nothing will be done.
All right. Were are those all of of your comments regarding this as as written?
As I said earlier, F potentially excessive cost Potentially, it does, of course. Needs to be removed.
And is that it?
That's it. I quit.
Thank you. Thank you, but we do have. Absent any further comment, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion as, does everyone understand the motion as stated by Commissioner Washburn?
And on this one, I'm going to recommend a roll call vote, name by name.
All right, and Glenn, you had something?
Just, just a point of clarification, because I'm the one that has to make all the changes. The two issues that Commissioner Leah just brought up, is there consensus on those issues?
Those are not part of the, those are not part of the.
The motion, okay. I wanted to, just, just wanted to make sure.
Which is why we're going to take a vote on the motion, and if there is consensus. In the direction that Commissioner Leah has just pointed, then the motion will fail, and then we will have further discussion. All right, let us, let us take a vote. Commissioner Washburn?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Leah?
No.
And I am an I. The. Vote passes for commissioners to one. All right. So staff.
May I make a comment after this has been done now? Clearly, our staff has heard all the commissioners and all the concerns, and as there may be opportunities to help relieve the concerns of any of the commissioners or frankly, any of the public at this point. We have very competent staff that knows how to do that, with that, and we have tools also. So if any commissioner ultimately feels like there is something lacking, you just bring it up to a commission meeting and we talk about it.
Good idea.
Okay, and Glenn, when you're, when you are doing this, there were, there were a couple of grammatical. Items brought up in the, the email and letter submissions, you may want to, you may want to include those as well. There's a typo on page one.
Yeah, I got, I got that one.
And then there, there is, the director is referred to as CDD kind of throughout, and on page, page four, in the middle of the page, it just says the director, so you may want. That, that falls within the grammatical corrections that, that we discussed and approved, so just take a look at that.
Lawyers like to see consistency.
Absolutely.
Got it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let us, let us move on to item number three. Which is a discussion of a lakeside overlay zone to modify the development standards for uniquely configured existing attached homes adjacent to the Calabasas Lake. Judy, you'll be presenting on this?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair.
And just real quickly, Judy, before you start, just so the commission knows or the chair knows, I'm going to be changing to the hosting duties for this item. So I'll be looking out for the public.
Thank you.
All right. Let me, please allow me to share my screen. Madam Chair and members of the commission. Tonight's staff brings before you a discussion of a lakeside overlay zone to modify the development standards for a uniquely configured existing attached home. Area adjacent to Calabasas Lake. Everybody see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
And let me pause before I continue, there was one on page two of the staff report. It was incorrectly stated that there were five applications that were approved. Five applications were processed, and we'll go into more detail as we continue through the presentation. It's just that it wasn't, all five of them were not approved. Moving on to the map. Here in yellow, you'll see a large overview of the area that we're speaking of this evening. There are forty-three attached single family homes, and they are uniquely configured with shared walls between them. The homes are clustered in small groups with the majority of the homes are located on its own lot with no side setback. This area was developed in nineteen sixty-nine in the, in the county of Los Angeles. With attached single family homes with a zoning designation of RPD, which is residential planned development. In nineteen ninety-one, citywide rezoning category of single family, residential single family, which is RS. Including these properties in a, in a general RS zone should not have occurred. Since in hindsight, as their legal nonconforming status does not fit in an RS. In RS rules with the development standards. And specifically, that speaks to site coverage and setbacks. So whenever a property owner in this lakeside neighborhood proposes to demolish their existing home and build a new home. The code requires them to meet the RS standards, which is impractical, and we will get into that in a little bit. Because of this situation, this forces the property owner to request a variance or many variances from the development standards if they wish to rebuild or add on to their home in this area. This is kind of like a closer look at that bottom area of the, of the clusters. And you'll see that, that the homes are clustered together, they look like they're just built right next to each other, there's no space in between them. We're going to take this home right here as an example, so that we can kind of understand it using this example moving forward. So that, what you're looking at is that particular lot that I was pointing at. Now, what you're looking at is an approximate depiction of the setbacks. What I did is I took the property lines. Kind of from GIS and what we, what information that we had and just superimposed it on a picture. Now, this picture has shadows and it's kind of difficult to see exactly, but I just did my best to give you a, an overview of what this might look like visually on a property. The red dash line, as you can see, is the property line of the property. The blue dash line here is the setbacks that you would impose if, if it were to impose the existing RS zone. And the blue polygon in the middle represents the area in which you would be able to build a new home. So if this home that is, it's actually right here, it's right up against the property line. If this home were to be demolished over fifty percent, we would review it as a new home. And as such, all the RS regulations would kick in, and they would be subject to this blue box for rebuilds. If you oppose these setback rules, you'll get this limited blue box, and you would have to follow by all the regulations. This is why they have to ask for several variances in order to build a reasonable house. So kind of going back now, if we look at this area again, I mentioned that the, there are five projects that were processed. From two thousand and five to two, twenty twenty. And to address the circumstances of what I just spoke about. This table, let's see if you can see this, let me see if I can move you guys over here. I've depicted the five, and we'll go over those in detail as well, but I wanted you to see where they are. I do want to point out that there's an additional sixteen homes in this area, if you can follow my cursor. And I'll show you pictures of these ones too. These homes also have the same configurations, they're clustered, they don't have a side setback. And we can choose to add this to the discussion if you like, but for, for starters, I wanted to offer you this. Oops. This area first, because this is where we see five projects that came in for new homes. In this area with the sixteen, we only had one project, but it was not for a new home, so we wanted to focus in on the ones that we were having trouble with as they came through. The staff right reached out to the property management of classic Calabasas area and CPHA, and we haven't heard back from them. They were invited to participate in part of the discussion tonight. This is a table, this was in the staff report as well, and it charts out the five projects that came through. And like I said, four of them came in with a decision of approval. And in this column, you'll see how many variances they were asking for. Just a side note that the first two were to ask for to set back for an enclosed porch, as you can see, and also the second one for an exterior staircase, so they asked for one variance. They were approved. The second two are for new homes, and so they asked for five variances each, and those two were approved. The last one asked for four variances, it was for a new house, but because of the circumstances of that project, it was denied without prejudice. So just to give you a feel for how, what they're looking like. In order of the variances that came in, this one, it was for the the side setback. And I believe it's this middle house, if I'm not mistaken. This one was also for a, for a staircase. And perhaps it's the middle one, I'm not sure, so I can get back to you on that, on the left?
Middle one.
Middle one, thank you. And this one was for a new house, and it was built, so this is the product of what was approved. This one, I happen to know a lot of detail about, I brought this forth to the planning commission, it was approved for a new house that was not built and will not be built with this developer. And then finally, the last, the latest one that you all saw was for a new house, it's this unit and unit here, and it was denied. These are the homes that I told you about, the extra sixteen on Park Sorrento, I just wanted to give you a visual. Is there a question? That they're also built right next to each other, and you'll notice that, you know, between each of them, you'll see a a firewall, a party wall to separate the units. The current standards for the RS zone, I wanted to depict how that looks on a, on a site. So I'm going to take the same site that I showed you before. The black line represents the property line. The red line represents the existing structure. And then in the blue dotted lines, I've depicted the setbacks that in RS, the current zoning standards would require. Ten on each side and twenty on the front in rare. This is an unusual lot, it's not squared off, so you're going to see a lot of angles, and we have to be very creative when we, we have to technically calculate how we measure the setback because of it's the angled lot. So staff, knowing that we have this problem every time someone comes through with a variance, we've brainstormed some suggestions for your consideration and discussion today. Mainly, we want to look at the floor area, the site coverage, the setbacks, which are most problematic, and also the height if, if the commission wishes to discuss. Notice that there are, when we say end units. It means that it's, when they're clustered, let's say, five units are clustered together, there's always going to be an end. And that end opens up against open space, it's like, it's common space, so not all the homes are in all one row, you have chunks, and so we have given provisions for setbacks on the side for those end units. So this is what it would look like, let's say. The commission accepted what was proposed previously, and of course, we'll talk about it, this is just the visual of what it may look like. So again, you have the black dotted line as your property line, and you have the existing house, which is in red. And what the proposal is, is that you'll have a zero lot line for this side, and notice that it's connected to this, so we're taking out that ten foot setback here. On this other side, this happens to be an end unit, so the setback proposed would be five feet from the property line. And then front and back, we just kept it at ten, twenty feet currently for your discussion, and this is what twenty feet would look like. I want to point out one more thing, which is in the suggestion here. There is a provision to allow, let's say, take the front setback, we're asking for twenty feet or existing setback based on our survey. So what that, how that play, goes into play is that we're asking for twenty feet, which is here. But if the existing house, in this example, it shows clear, it's less than twenty. If they get a survey to prove that their existing house is closer than twenty, then they could keep that existing setback. And that suggestion also plays into this rear setback where their existing setback in the red is less than twenty. So that if they can, if they got a survey to confirm that location, they would be able to keep their existing condition. So the next step is for staff to draft an ordinance based on a, on direction provided by the commission. Prepare necessary SEQA documentation, public hearing with the planning commission, and public hearing with the city council. So staff recommends that the commission provides staff with direction on development of propose, of the proposed lakeside overlay, specifically, staff would like the commission's recommendation on floor area ratio, site coverage, setbacks, and heights. And that concludes staff's report tonight. I also have Jacqueline Rackerby, Assistant Planner, with me tonight, and we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. I have a question. Actually, two related questions. Why were the Park Sorrento homes not included in this proposed overlay zone, and is there any reason not to include them? They seem to have the same condition, they, they seem to have the same conditions that are prompting this suggested overlay zone.
Chair Fosberg, this is Tom, I know you asked Judy, but I was just looking at the zoning map to confirm, but those properties do not have the RS zoning. They are zoned multifamily. That's why the area that's been carved out on this map specifically is what's under discussion, because that is the unique portion of all this development around the lake that for some reason has the residential single family zoning.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Before I open the public comment portion, I, are there any questions or comments by commissioners? I, Commissioner Mueller?
I wonder if Judy could comment on why staff is proposing to leave the rear setback at twenty feet? As a, I mean, that's, that's.
Let's get to that table. Um. I think with the provision of the fact that we would allow them to keep their existing non-conforming with a survey. Does speak to any situation where if they are closer than twenty feet now, um. It would, it would, it would stay that way for them. Um. These lots are rather long, and so in, in this instance, um, the angles make it difficult, but some of the lots are rather long. And so um, there are times, there are lots that could meet the twenty. And we, we, we use that as a starting point, but certainly um, suggestions are solicited tonight.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a concern that, that um, if the setback, if the rear setback, because these are the ones that all go face the lake. If the rear setback was ten feet, that you could have um, construction that would interfere with uh, a neighbor's view of the lake, for example. If they're all at twenty feet, then everyone's sort of in the same boat, no pun intended. But if it's, if it, if it's suddenly we go to this overlay zone and we change the setback in the rear to ten feet. Some people will take advantage of that and some people won't. And then you could have some interference. It just seems, it seems to me. I thought there, there, I thought that might be the thinking, but, okay.
On the other hand, um. Judy, do you know how many of the existing homes uh, would end up being or are legal non-conforming? Because uh, the rear setback is something, I, I recall when we were, when we were reviewing one of these properties. Uh, there was reference to the fact that quite a number of these homes have been, have been built. Uh, less than twenty feet away from the lakeside. Uh, in other words, the rear setback. Any idea how many of them?
It don't have specific numbers. Uh, we do have just the data on the ones that we have a report for, uh, which are the uh, five. But then only three of them are of new homes. Um, you know, if you look, I, I do want to comment on the fact that it's, it's quite difficult, um, even visually to see uh, whether uh, rear setback is at twenty feet or closer. Um, let me, if we're speaking about the back, let me just show you some pictures of the, the rear side. So I took um, I picked these few pictures because they're, you know, just from a pedestrian view and you're looking uphill. And this is the backyard of um, the ones along Park Marisol. Um, it's really hard to say that one, one of them juts out, others jet in. Without a survey, we wouldn't be able to confirm any of those measurements. Um, especially that there's no clear indication where the property line is. If you see my cursor, the property line, oops. The property, let, let's look at this picture. This might be well. The property line may be here, but then on the next property, it might jet back or just have bushes. And so without um, proper surveying of each site, we, we do have the, the ones that we have for the three reports, which is um, the last three.
And, and if I could add a little bit on this, I was one of the people who looked at the uh, what we call our red files. Those are the permits that have been issued for development. Um, there is sixty years of development that has occurred here, uh, fifty for sure. Um, and we really don't know what is permitted and what it's not. Because while we have a permit that says add patio fifty, fifty, a hundred and fifty square feet. We don't have a plan that accompanied that addition. So the problem is, is that we have an unclear history. And just a survey alone will tell us where things are. But we can't even verify uh, whether or not that thing that's there has a right to be there. So um, this um, proposal effectively to say if you survey it and it's there. Is actually a very generous proposal relative to uh.
In mind?
Not, uh, 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 not relying upon inaccurate data. And, and it's a, a sort of odd conception to the pickle that we're in with these rear property lines.
Hey, thank you. I, any other comments, questions? I, Commissioner Washburn.
I don't want to be a troublemaker, but I would like to at least ask the questions. Um, if someone wants to actually build a new home. Um, and it essentially um. Escapes the, um, or, you know, reaches out from the pre-existing non-conforming use um, protections or entitlements. Do we have to apply the pervious services ordinance or the lighting and dark skies ordinance? Or the oak tree ordinance or the landscape conservation or conservation landscaping ordinance to whatever is done? Or does the multifamily set of rules um, help to relieve some of that potential? And then another thing occurred to me, um, is anybody in this arena considering adding an ADU? And are they allowed to do so?
Well, let me work backwards. Um, the ADU is allowed for residential units, so yeah. Single family.
Single family residential.
Single family. So um, it would be difficult for them to fit it on here. Uh, currently, there is no FAR standard for um, this area since it's RS. Um, so as long as they can meet all the protocols and currently they would need also, um, I guess I, I would look to Matt to see if they were requiring, if they were proposing an ADU, would we impose all the variances?
No, and if ADU, ADUs come in two flavors, one or two critical flavors on the legal side under state law. One is that are fully within the existing building or on up to a hundred and fifty square foot addition solely for the purpose of ingress and egress. Those ADUs, there's no, no variances, no nothing. It's existing building, interior conversion. Those are allowed by right, uh, subject to certain requirements in our ADU ordinance. And that would be what I would most expect, an ADU to be built for us, one of the houses on Park Marisol. It would be an interior conversion, uh, which is allowed, and that comes in two sub flavors, ADUs or junior ADUs. Which turns on whether or not they're shared sanitation and certain size requirements. Alternatively, theoretically, you could build a detached ADU or, or expand the footprint by doing an attached ADU expansion. But if you do that, you have to meet certain setbacks that are um, in line with what's proposed as the suggested standards. Although the setbacks for an, uh, an, an attached or a detached ADU are slightly different than the default RS setbacks under applicable state law. But as a practical matter, an ADU in Park Marisol is almost certainly going to be in the interior conversion. In which case, we're not looking at setback standards because they're converting the existing interior building. Or they're building a whole new building and then defining part of it as an interior ADU would be my expectation. Subject, of course, to the ADU ordinance.
And then to speak to the rest of your questions, Commissioner Washburn. Um. It is currently an RS zone, so we wouldn't impose anything that, if there wasn't oak tree, we would, we would certainly study the oak tree. Um, we wouldn't, there's no provisions to um, to not study it just the way we would everything else. Um, I do, and I'm trying to rack my brain on um, the site coverage, we would, we would study. And that's why, you know, you're, you're seeing all the variances for the site coverage. But there's something about pervious, perhaps if Tom or Glenn might remember. Um, there is a provision for uh, pervious surface that perhaps.
Well, well, I'd have to look, I'd have to look through our records where track, we have proof that the track map, when approved, already provided for pervious surface area consistent with the ordinance. Then individual lots within that tract are not held accountable for the very same standard. Because that would be a uh, double jeopardy issue. And so we do have some records on some tracks of that sort, but this track predates even city um, hood in nineteen ninety-one. So I do not believe this is in that group. Glenn, am I?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll add um, this. And we went through this with uh, if you remember the project on Park Marisol that came through just late last year and ended up being denied. Um, we dealt with this and there is a slight credit in this neighborhood for inclusion of those common area properties. It's, it's not much, but it certainly helped out with, with those applications. And uh, they were, I, I don't, I can't recall one that wasn't able to meet the, the, the landscape and previous surface requirement. Uh, the standard that was of issue more is at the top of this table right here is the site coverage. And uh, we found that, that to build a reasonable house out, out there, the site coverage was often hard to reach. And what we did in terms of our recommendation for, uh, obviously for discussion tonight is we took the, our basic RS standard, which if you're going to create an RS zone property. It has to be a minimum of five thousand square feet. So we took the, the minimum lot of five thousand square foot, applied the fifty percent standard to it. Uh, as you can see, the current standard fifty percent, that's how we got this twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, adding in or, or would, uh, or fifty percent ma- max, whichever is greater. So if they can get more, they can get more from fif- fifty percent. Um, if they have a, a, a lot that's smaller, they're allowed to have a little bit more. And so we're hopeful that that threshold would relieve um, most homeowners of needing to apply for variance application for site coverage.
How about dark skies and lighting?
Uh, that order.
Yeah, that all, that all applies.
Can you remind us uh, the, the three most recent, uh, the, the three rebuilds? Um, can you remind us of the, the square footage on those three properties?
Sure.
I have those in uh, front of me, the staff reports for those. Um, wanted to go through the lot square footage or the building area.
Building, building area.
Sure. So let's start with the um, going back in time, the first rebuild application that we got for four, six, one, five Park Marisol. Um, the proposed, let's see here. Actually blank for the square footage on the technical appendix, okay? Uh, proposed square footage was three thousand fifty-nine square feet. And then for the site coverage, it was one thousand nine hundred and twelve. Um, so the site coverage square footage would be below the twenty-five hundred limit that we just mentioned. And then move on to the next one chronological order. This is four, six, two, five Park Marisol. Um, this was for a two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine square foot house. We flipped into the technical appendix, the proposed site coverage was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine. Um, and just for reference, that was um, fifty-three percent site coverage. So in these cases, it would be over the fifty percent, but within that twenty-five hundred square foot limit we just talked about. Get to number five. This was for a three thousand six hundred and sixty square foot residence. Um, this application that I'm looking at right now for four, six, zero, two Park Marisol, this was the application that was processed, not approved. It was denied without prejudice. And flip to the site coverage for that one, that was proposed two thousand four hundred and seventy-three square feet for the site coverage. So that's also within the twenty-five hundred square foot limit and that's sixty-one percent site coverage. So all three of them are over the fifty percent current limit for the RS zone in terms of site coverage. Um, but would be allowed with the current proposed ordinance, which is the twenty-five hundred square foot limit.
Thank you. Okay, do we have, do we have any other uh, Commissioner Harrison?
Oh yeah, uh, thank you. I've got a lot of comments. Uh, thank you so much for preparing this. Um, I'm, my first question is, I'm not sure why you're calling it the lakeside overlay zone instead of the park mirasol overlay zone. But um, frankly, I don't think it was a mistake that's, that this was included in the RS zoning. Because there are many other planned unit developments with similar lot sizes or even smaller lot sizes and non-conforming setbacks that are included in the RS zone. And maybe we should have a separate zone for PUDs, planning unit developments. Or maybe they should all be put in the planned development PD zone. I'm not sure why they weren't in the PD zone. Cause that would probably give us more flexibility. Um, I think the real problem on Park Mirasol is that is the lack of HOA architectural controls. Um, but let me tell you about the four, I just thought of four PUDs off the top of my head, because I live in one of them. Or near one. In Calabasas Hills where I live, there are, there's a tract with lots that are twenty-seven to thirty-five feet wide and as small as thirty-five hundred and fifty uh, square feet. And they all have zero lot lines effectively on one side, zero lot lines. You can't build one foot on one side of the house. Same thing in Palatino, which is an HOA behind the gates for Calabasas Park Estates. Similar lot sizes, zero lot lines on one side effectively. And on the other side of town, you got Stone Creek, which has very irregular lots, some as narrow as twenty-five feet wide and as small as three thousand square feet or maybe less than three thousand square feet. And Country Creek Lane, which I remember when that was built, that's, that's another PUD with lots which are thirty-five feet wide and as small as twenty-eight hundred and fifty square feet. So, I mean, why aren't we getting a lot of variance applications from the, those PUDs or the other PUDs all across the city? That have small lots and zero lot lines or whatever? I, I think it's because of not just market forces, but it's, the main reason is the other PUDs are in HOAs which enforce, they have strong enforcement of their architectural rules. And this one, I, I mean, if you came to my HOA and said you wanted to put up a three-story box, they'll probably call nine-one-one on you to take you away. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, they're gonna, it's not gonna happen. But in classic Calabasas, there's oh, there's no local HOA, there's only Calabasas uh, park HOA. And they don't seem to be concerned about the color or the style or the size or, or compatibility. So um, I'm concerned about this being discriminatory against all the other PUDs in the city. Which are, which have the same problem with, with variances. And they're far, far more, there are more homes in the P, in, in the track, in my HOA than there are in Park Marisol. And they all have zero lot lines on one side. So again, I would like to move them all to some new zone, whether it's PD or some subset of, of uh, single family residential. Um, so that they can, they don't have to apply for multiple variances. I mean, if somebody wants to extend their family room where I live, five feet, they have to get two variances probably. And why, why should they have to go through that? It's the same with these people. There should be, there shouldn't be discrimination against all the other PUDs in the city, just in favor of this one PUD. I, I think they should all be lumped together. Um, anyway, that's my thoughts. As far as your specific proposals, I think we need more information on the FAR and more, more data on the site coverage. I do like the setbacks though that you came up with, you know, the, the, the way to handle the setbacks for these non-conforming homes. But again, it should apply to all PUDs in the city. As far as the height goes, I, 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 you know, I, I don't like the three stories. I think that's incompatible with these neighborhoods. So I mean, thirty-five feet's okay, but thirty-five feet or two stories, whichever is less, I think. Anyway, those are just my thoughts.
Right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I wonder if we have a sense what the forty-three homes there feel about this overlay zone? Cause it will change the nature of that community. Do we have any idea what they think of it?
We um, we posted this meeting and certainly it wasn't a public noticing five hundred foot requirement. Um, it was posted. I did reach out to the HOA. We have not received any comment from anyone. So I don't, we don't have any comments.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to remind the commission members that this is a work in progress, the discussion. Um, we wouldn't normally do a public notice, like a hearing notice for something that is so um, still so much in a working draft kind of um, status. Uh, you could, unfortunately, you might get a lot of people excited about something that isn't yet even half-cooked, much less fully cooked. We would absolutely. We would absolutely want to get as much input as we can before this would be finalized for actual consideration at a hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Mueller, did you have something that you wanted to say? You're, you're muted.
I, I think Vice Chair Harrison raised some good points and I'd like to see those addressed. I'd hate to have to go through this drill again for another PUD down the road. And so I, I don't know what the urgency is to get this one done as an overlay zone prior to a more universal analysis. And, and also I agree with, with the Vice Chair about needing more information about the FAR. I, I just can't pull one out of the air and say this is a good idea for this. You know, I'd, I'd want to know more about what the FARs are now and in similar situations to make any kind of informed recommendation. So I, in general, don't have a problem with the concept of this overlay zone. It's a weird neighborhood for historical reasons. People are not weird, the houses are interesting. But I think Commissioner Harrison raises a good point on similarly situated PUDs.
I. Do we have, Tom, are you, you the one who is going to respond to this?
If you're talking about other neighborhoods, so I'll give a, a response to that.
Yeah.
The reason, the reason we're looking at this one and only this one at this time is because this neighborhood is the one that's been experiencing through a funk, I'll call it functional obsolescence condition. The turnover that's resulted in not only just making some modifications to existing units, but it's become cost effective for property owners to completely demolish units and rebuild from the ground up. That's what's presenting the problem that is unique to this neighborhood. And, and to a greater extent than these other neighborhoods mentioned by Commissioner Harrison. That doesn't mean that these other neighborhoods wouldn't warrant consideration along these lines. And we're certainly going to take these excellent comments we're hearing from you under advisement. And we may come back to the commission with those sorts of things. But right now, absent doing something like this, we have no choice but to continue to bring one project at a time to the commission where variances are going to be asked for. And of course, if you put yourself in the shoes of the property owner and their professionals who are trying to help them, engineers and architects, there's an awful lot of frustration on their side when they're having to go to a planning commission asking for a handful of variances because of such an odd zoning. So this would help alleviate a lot of problems on different sides of this issue for an area that really needs it now. And then we can focus on some less urgent areas of the city similarly as time allows, work-wise, work, work plan wise and that sort of thing.
Wendy, let me, let me ask you a question if I can of Tom in this case. This is likely to be a component and an immediate one of the assessment that we're making of our overall needs to deal with housing development and policy. If there is a new house constructed in a case like this, despite all of the constraints that they have to face, is there any credit that comes to the city for creating additional housing or new housing in that case? Or will ADUs in fact, in these instances be contributory to our meeting our affordable housing demands as well? And I would apply that across the board to all the PUDs, whether they're called that or not. And the future of PUDs that we might wish to deal with. So it's probably worth our time to deal with this problem, not just on a site specific basis here in Park Marisol, but as Commissioner Harrison has pointed out, we need to deal with this, you know, system-wide. And that may be already what you're thinking about. I just would like to get a little more elaboration on that.
What, what Commissioner Washburn's alluding to is the housing element update that we're having to do to meet state law for that part of our general plan. This effort and any similar companion type efforts that could be done for similar neighborhoods would not have any impact on our regional housing needs, allocation and our ability to meet that. Because we're talking about existing units on existing lots and be able to accommodate somebody to be able to keep those units. They'd keep them one way or another, although if you were to project in time decades, I suppose the absence of a more, a more, I don't want to say helpful, set of zoning standards could lead to more deterioration of the housing stock over time. Which of course would not be a good thing. We'd rather have citizens in the community reinvest in their properties. But in terms of the numbers of housing units, it won't make a difference. And in terms of ADU capacity, it's not going to make a difference there either, because the state rules on ADUs are already preemptory. They're going to govern in whatever form can fit, as Matt Summers already explained.
Tom, do you have any, do you have any sense of the, the, the additional time that it would take if you went back and evaluated which areas with PU, PUDs could be included in this, in this value? I, I, I get, I get the sense from your reaction that, that it's a, it's, would be an unwieldy process.
I think it would be under the present circumstances, yes.
Why would it be so, I don't see why it would be that hard. It would, the same rules that you put up here could apply to all the PUDs. You, you, all you have to do is find those PUDs. You don't have to go do that long analysis. I mean, you've put in so much work already, it's ready, you just apply it to other PUDs.
That sounds simple and I appreciate that. But right now I have no data on there's the sizes of those lots. I don't have data on what their typical setback obstacles are. We, we actually haven't been getting variance requests or.
I, I explained why, it's the HOAs and market forces. But, but it's the same thing, twenty feet or existing setback. I mean, I think these rules would apply to all the other PUDs you wouldn't, it would not be difficult. You just have to identify all the PUDs or just say all PUDs.
So the question is, Tom, identifying them and evaluating it. It's not just identifying them, it's evaluating them. You mentioned determining lot size, et cetera, et cetera. That data gathering that you would need to do, what kind of timeframe do you think would be required?
It's, it's, it'd be hard for me to guess, but we could certainly do a little bit of looking into that and then get that information back to the commission. We'd need to consider that strongly, because our work plan is something that we can't just expand exponentially and, and we have to be able to adapt other things. We'll have to put other things on the back burner. So we'll certainly look into that. I mean, it's something we should look into for the reason, I think there are some good reasons to do that. Whether it's.
Didn't take me that long to print out the track maps for those four PUDs and look at the lot sizes. And, and as I said, these rules are perfect. I mean, you don't have to change the rules. So for setbacks, for example, I, I think you just have to identify besides the four that I mentioned. And maybe there, maybe there are a couple of others.
Well, I, Tom, it sounds like it might be, it might be a good idea to go back, investigate a little bit in terms of how many of these additional communities with PUDs would be appropriate to include in this, this analysis. Evaluate how much time you think it would take to bring those, those communities up to the same speed that this community is at. And whether that amount of time would, would unfairly impact and delay a decision on this community, which obviously has present needs. And then, then we can make an evaluation whether, whether I, we need to move forward with regard to this community or whether the, whether it can wait for them all to be done together. I mean, does that make sense?
It makes sense to me and we're, we'll be happy to do that. And I'm not objecting the idea at all. I just did want to remind the commission members that in this neighborhood, until this sort of thing will be put in place, we will continue to receive these variance requests as they come up. So now, in the meantime, we still have a set of standards here. And Commissioner Harrison, as or Vice Chair Harrison has indicated that he thinks these standards, at least in their draft form, are very appropriate perhaps, and maybe even already appropriate for some of these other neighborhoods. I definitely think this is a good time to get all of your input on how you believe these draft standards might be effective. And then that will help us as we move forward, whether we are going to be able to apply them to other neighborhoods or not. We'll, we'll answer that question soon enough.
Okay, anybody want to weigh in?
I, I agree with Commissioner Harrison. I think these look pretty appropriate based on these analysis and excellent presentation. Other than the FAR, I'm just fuzzy on that. I would point out that, that yes, it's been a pain to have to deal with variances in this neighborhood as long as I've been on the commission. But you're talking about five properties over forty-three properties, I think you said since two thousand and five. So you're only talking about a little over eight percent of these properties have sought remedies over a fifteen-plus year period. It's not exactly excessive. I mean, if you, if you told me there's, you're, you're aware of, of ten of these homes that are preparing their applications, including requests for variances, then that, that urgency would be elevated.
Well, the issue, the issue is, first of all, okay, one person might think eight percent is not a whole lot. But when you put it in the realm of variances and we've got a, a preponderance almost of lawyers on our commission here, you can understand that a variance is a very specific set of legal tests basically that have to be met to grant a variance. And this is something that's been metted out in courts across the country. So variance requirements for approvals are not a whole lot different from state to state and city to city across the United States. They're supposed to be tough standards and we apply them as tough standards in Calabasas and appropriately so. So the issue we're facing is here we have a neighborhood and it happens to be this one where these have been coming up for whatever reason. Okay, but we end up having to take before this commission, who has to act in a quasi judicial fashion, a handful of variances as a means of trying to accommodate a property owner where these, the standards are trying to get variances from just don't even make any sense. So to try to make a finding that the property is unusually shaped or sized for the zoning district. And yet all, not only is that subject property small for the district and narrow and all that, well, so are all the neighbors. And yet somewhere down the line, you also have to make a finding that what's being asked for is consistent with what the other neighbors have. Well, the other neighbors have the same existing condition. So it's very incongruent in how we have to take a set of variance findings to the commission when your basic zoning is so inconsistent with the current condition. That's why this was the created approach to try reconcile the problem. And I, I agree, like I said, it, it's the right approach for a lot of areas, not just this one. We just wanted to start with this one, because this is, this is the one, the fire that's been lit.
Thank you.
Okay. And just to weigh in on the suggested standards, I, I agree with Commissioners Harrison and Mueller. I think, I think it's a really good start. I'm, I think each of the standards looks good. The FAR, of course, I think we need a little more information. Height, a little less information, but still a little more than what we have. Other than that, the, the site coverage and the setbacks look very reasonable and very, very doable. I, does anyone else have any comments? Okay, well, I. Tom, do you have enough, enough to go on to, to perhaps concurrently work on providing the, a little more information regarding FAR and, and height?
Absolutely.
And know that, that it sounds like we're, we're fairly on board with regard to the other standards that are being proposed. And at the same time, take a look at what would be involved with bringing, bringing those other communities into, into the discussion. And we can make the determination, once we have that information, whether we move forward with this one alone or whether we can wrap it all in within a reasonable amount of time. Glenn, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just as your host tonight, it is a discussion item and I don't think you're obligated to take public comment. We do have one member of the public and we can certainly ask if that member of the public would like to speak.
If it's up to you. Jump in on that one. We do, it, it's on the agenda, so we have to take public comment and everything on the agenda. Again, public comment, not public hearing.
Okay, if, if anyone in the audience wants to be heard, please raise your hand now.
I am not seeing the hand raised.
I'm not either.
Okay, then Matt, do I need to open and close the public comment or with no one?
We have complied with the requirement. Members of the public who may be listening, but through the other methods, but not present through the Zoom, should be advised that the matter will return to the commission. And then eventually in a public hearing at the commission and of course, a public hearing at the city council. So there will be ample continuing opportunities for public comment.
And I'll even add that if anybody who's watching or will see the tape later decides they want to give us a comment while it's fresh in their mind right then and there, all they have to do is email us their comments at any time.
Okay, terrific. All right, then I believe that we are on to the director's report. Maureen?
Thank you. I'll start with a notation that this commission has been requesting twice now by the public to place additional banners with regard to hearing notifications for West Village. I will tell you that the code requires us to go out and to place notices in three ways. Number one, which is by mail to property owners within five hundred feet of the boundaries of the site. Number two, by placement in a newspaper of local circulation. And because of the status of this project as a community development forum project in the acorn specifically. And number three, by signage on the site. So those are the three methods of getting word out on that particular project. What staff can do is to do more than what is required by the code. The applicants can do more if they choose to. The public can do what they wish if they choose to. But staff is limited to exactly what the code states we can accomplish. Additionally, state law prohibits the city from posing additional notice requirements. from posing additional notice requirements on the applicant beyond those that were in place at the time that this application was filed. So I'd like to just let Mr. Suvara and the public, Mr. Chilko this evening, who spoke to the subject note that that is why they have not heard from the city that effectively there is nothing that this commission can direct staff to do, can direct the applicant to do when noticing beyond what is currently within the code. Beyond that, I don't know if city attorney wants to say more, but that is the reason that there has been silence on the part of this commission and, and council.
I'll add two further points. One is just to note to the record, the issues arise under the Housing and Climate Act and certain recent state laws, particularly Government Code Section 65589.5 subdivision O provides in summary that we can only apply application requirements that were in place at the time the application was submitted and not change them later. Our noticing is built into our application requirements. Thus, we are complying with that requirement and not forcing the applicant to pay for extra notice as we lack power under state law. In short, Sacramento's fault. The second point is to note again for the members of the public who may be watching this part of the meeting, the planning commission will be considering the West Village project on April 15th and April 21st of this year. Thank you.
So beyond that, I'll tell you that the density bonus ordinance will be going to the city council. That's what you considered at your last hearing. It will be going to council on March 10th for council's consideration. I also want to let you know that if any of you are interested in some, in what Sacramento is doing, I will be reviewing 17 related housing bills with the city council that are currently in the 2021 legislative slates. The COG, the Council of Governments, has requested comments and consideration of a pro or con on those particular bills. Out of 17, there are about eight that are of significance to the city. So we might, if we have time, bring that discussion over to the planning commission as well. Because I think it is noteworthy to understand exactly how the state is pushing creative ideas, new laws in order to further housing development. So your next meeting will be for the planning commission on March 18th. And Brenda and Jacqueline will have two projects coming forward, a project on Paul Revere as well. That's a project on Placeta. So, so those will be two housing remodelings extensive. And right now that is what's on our slate. And if we have time, then we might be able to do that quick legislative overview. So with that, that concludes my comments for this evening. I want to thank everyone for their contributions, their input. It was fun to listen in on both efforts, legislative efforts. And so we'll certainly move forward on the first and investigate the second. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison, for pointing out that in fact about 80% or 90%, I'll say 90% of our housing stock is existing, not conforming. So I suspect that what we're going to find is where there's smoke, there is fire. And that's why I think there is a little hesitancy on the part of staff to say once we start digging, it's going to be perhaps a larger project than we can take on. We'll start to take a look. So with that, I want to thank everyone. Wish you a happy evening.
Thank you. Do we have reports from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Washburn?
It's not a report. It just occurs to me that the offer to link, you know, that presentation from Jim Laurie might be better sent to the Director of Planning and Development and perhaps the media director in order to deal with, you know, getting the, the wider community, including our commissioners, aware without threatening the Brown Act intercommunication issues. Matt, you probably would confirm that that's probably something I should have thought about, but-
No worries. Send it to a director and it can get distributed from there.
That's what I'm going to do. So, and Maureen, if, if you can actually help me get it also to Mike Russo for possible consideration on CTV, then that would be helpful for us and for the community.
And, and I might note as a sequel to my director's report that we have had a request from the city council to take a look at a discussion on a climate action plans. So your comments are very timely. And we, I am in the process of working on that document for the council. It's quite the undertaking and when it comes for it, I'd like you all to know.
I can tell you that Lori's presentation will really open our eyes. It's pretty incredible.
All right. If there are no other, no other reports, we have a motion to adjourn. Wait, wait. Oh, thank you, Dennis. Got a second out there somewhere?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned to the regular meeting of March 18th, 2021. Thank you all.